You're watching the Cumberland City Council Forum. Brought to you by the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce. Held October 23rd at the Cumberland Campus of Allegheny College of Maryland. In conjunction with WCBC Radio and Allegheny College of Maryland's Center for Continuing Education.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back to this afternoon's Candidates' Forum for the General Election on November 6th. It'll be broadcast live right here on 1270 AM WCBC and online at WCBCradio.com. There are three active candidates vying for the Cumberland City Council. David Caparelli, John Klein, Nicole Wagner. This forum is designed to permit the voters of our community to learn more about each of the candidates so they can make an educated choice on Election Day. I'd like to start with asking everyone to please turn off your cell phones if you would. Little information on the format for this evening's forum. The candidates seated in alphabetical order according to their last names. Each round of questions will alternate which candidate answers first. The candidate that answered first in the previous round will answer last in the next round. The candidate will answer questions submitted by the Chamber membership, Chamber staff, WCBC news department, and also the general public. Each candidate will be asked the same question. The members of the panel who will be asking the questions this afternoon, Dr. Barb Beebe, George McKinley, Bill DuVall, and Brian Gallens. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. Please restrict your answers to the allotted time. You will be permitted to finish the sentence that you are speaking at the end of the allotted time. In fairness to all the candidates, please do not begin a new sentence after your time has expired. Now, a candidate will be provided an opportunity for a one-minute rebuttal. A rebuttal will be requested by waving the colored card provided to each candidate. You have a chance after everyone has answered. In our final segment, you'll have the opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement. We'll be taking three breaks in each hour, approximately every 20 minutes. There'll be breaks anywhere from three to four minutes in duration to allow everybody to catch their breath and briefly relax. So let's get started. The first question will be for David Caparelli. It'll be asked by panel member Dr. Barb Beebe.
Thank you. Mr. Caparelli, the aging infrastructure of the city, including water, sewer, and roads, is a major problem citywide. In your opinion, given reductions in state funds, what is the best way to prioritize and pay for these projects?
As everyone may know, aging infrastructure is a problem in our entire region. Streets have been an ongoing process. They didn't deteriorate in one to two years, and it's going to take time to repair all of our streets. I would like to implement a five-to-ten-year infrastructure restoration plan on a priority basis. As in the past couple of years, I don't recall seeing as many public work projects as I have over the past couple of years. Five to 10 years ago, I don't remember seeing as much work on our streets as we've seen recently. Last year, a good example would be Henderson Avenue was completed thoroughly. This year, Old Town Road is being completed with new water lines. Recently, we have also completed 800 new lines of water on Lafayette Avenue and Kentucky and Michigan Avenue are slated to be next. The additional funds from the Memorial Hospital fund issue is also providing for new emergency valves and emergency shut-offs to help prevent excessive breaks that we had seen on Bedford Street, et cetera. We're also undergoing a five-year study, excuse me, analyzing excessive flow and water surges that may be contributing factor to some of the breaks we've seen in recent years. One of the last things I also wanted to add to infrastructure is tech infrastructure, which broadband will allow us, through domestic sourcing, et cetera, to attract new business to our area. Thank you.
John Klein.
As Dave said, our infrastructure hasn't deteriorated overnight. This has been a long-going process for years and years, and even as a young man growing up in Cumberland, I've seen the deterioration of a lot of the structures in our area. I believe that, and I agree with pretty much what Dave is saying there, we've had a resurgence of construction projects here in the City of Cumberland recently with the construction of the Old Town Road project, which I'm very familiar with because I have to take detours every day in route to go home. And that's a good thing, and I appreciate the work the city is doing. We definitely need a plan. Looking forward to continue to do these projects. Funding is going to be more and more difficult as we continue to receive less and less funds from the federal government. Obviously, we don't want to raise taxes. One of the things that I've noticed over the years, and we'll probably deal with that in a question later on, is the continuing spending down of our reserves to the point where it's gotten us into some financial difficulty. Borrowing money on a short-term basis would work well, as we continue to work towards our infrastructure, but that too costs with interest rates and so forth. The other idea that Dave spoke on, in fact, there was an article in the paper this morning about the broadband cooperative initiative to bring broadband to Western Maryland. That is a project that, once completed throughout the state, will allow for economic development, and as we continue our economic development, our tax base will increase, and then obviously there'll be money there to continue the projects that need to be done. Thank you.
Nicole Wagner.
Thank you. First of all, in regards to infrastructure, I believe that we need to prioritize based on the needs of our citizens and how it affects our citizens, so that's something we need to look at first. The city has already restructured their debt, so I believe we're going in the right direction. We could utilize more state and federal low-interest bond monies, and right now, we currently have a payment management plan in effect, and I think we need to stay the course with that as well, so I do have rebuttal.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Caparelli, you said that you would like to institute a five-to-ten-year restoration plan, and I would just be curious as to what that plan would be and how we would go about doing that.
Thank you. I think a continued effort, as we have seen on a need basis, as I said a few minutes ago, some of the new lines have been under construction, and that's new. I think up on Bedford Street, we had the issues there. That's addressing through the emergency shut-offs, et cetera, to try to prevent these breaks from happening to begin with. But also making sure, as you said, that the funding is available. We have secured funds for the new projects, and in the upcoming years, due to some of our debt restructuring, we are seeing increased cash flow and also trying to build our reserves as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Another rebuttal? Okay, John Klein.
It's not so much a rebuttal as it is a comment when we talk about infrastructure. I remember years ago, we did the Winifred Road project. It wasn't probably six months to a year, but as soon as the road was completed, we began digging it back up again to replace a water line or for the gas company to combine do repairs. So whatever we do in the future, we need to work together with all the utilities involved and do the project right in the first place so we don't continue to have these infrastructure problems, particularly when it comes to water, sewer, and gas lines. Thank you.
Our next question will be for John Klein and will be asked by panelist Bill DuVall.
On that same note, it takes funding to take care of these things. What is your specific economic development strategy for the city? And to follow up, what is the best way to attract and retain business to Cumberland? And that would be each of you individually, your economic plan.
Bill, thank you for the question. You know, Cumberland is not much different than a lot of the small communities across the United States. We've all been impacted by unemployment, dwindening population, empty storefronts, and that does impact the community quite a bit. One of the things, as we look about economic development, we need to continue to work as a community, not only with the elected officials, but with our residents, to come together as a coalition to work together, see what our Cumberland really needs and how to best accomplish those needs. Recently, we've had two meetings downtown with some organizations of the public officials. We talked about some of the problems downtown, being the continuing lording on the mall and so forth. I guess I'm getting off the economic development part. Repeat your question again for me, will you, Bill?
Sure. What is your specific economic development strategy for the city? Secondly, what is the best way to attract and retain business to Cumberland?
Okay. One of the biggest things that we could do to affect a change would be to commit to supporting our local merchants by shopping downtown. If there's a need for a product or service and you can't find it, then we need to talk to the merchants about the possibility of them being able to get it. Again, I think I'm getting off base on what the particular question is. I guess the biggest answer would be to work together with the elected officials to try to increase our tax base. I'll just have to pass on that one. Thanks.
Nicole Wagner.
Well, I don't think we need to continue to reinvent the wheel with economic development. The plan that we have is currently been in effect for two years. We have been getting updates at the city council meetings from Mr. Hirschberger, who is the new economic development coordinator for the city. I'm very pleased with the direction that the plan's going. I think the five initiatives that we currently have in place, we have a foundation there. I do believe that there's things that we can build upon, and I would, you know, with rural sourcing and such, I think we need to have broadband to be able to bring some of that stuff to us. Post-secondary education, I definitely see that we have some areas that we can grow. With the post-secondary education, I see it not as just bringing another institution into our area, but possibly bringing something for our individuals, such as the individuals that were laid off from work from Bayliner and such, as a way for them to possibly gain education, you know, and some of these people have started right out of high school and now are in their 40s or so, so this is possibly a way that, you know, whether it's vocational or something to teach them another skill set at this point. The Willerbrook Health Corridor is the other initiative. My vision would be to expand it one down to Baltimore Street because we currently have the health buildings, the Cheney Architect Building, I'm not for certain, I refer to it as that, but I'm sure it has a specific name to it, down by the old YMCA, and so I believe that that could possibly be expanded down to that area. Revitalization of downtown, we're doing that now, and the retention of our businesses regionally, reaching out to our neighbors. They're already here. We need to look at across the board, across the borders, businesses that possibly would maybe want a second location here. Thank you.
David Caparelli.
I believe as far as attracting business, you know, we need to be able to sell Cumberland. We need to remain business-friendly, and if that includes streamlining regulations, cutting red tape, et cetera, we need to transfer our economy. The old economy that was previously here is gone, unfortunately. We need to aggressively implement our economic initiatives based on our economic plan, which include, but obviously not limited to, rural sourcing and attracting strategic business to our area. But we also, I think, need to look at short and long-term goals and evaluate accordingly. Plans are great, but without implementation, we have nothing. We no longer need dead policies. How long have we had issues on the table in our area? Two, three, four, or five years with no results? So I think that is a direction we want to take. As far as retaining, we always have to be looking ahead. You know, years ago, we had all the manufacturing jobs, and now they're gone. I think continuing to look ahead to what the new trends are, what will be next for the regional economy, but also working with local delegation in the interest of achieving mutual results. Thank you.
You're listening to the Cumberland City Council Candidates' Forum from Allegheny College of Maryland on 1270 AM WCBC and online at WCBCradio.com. We'll take a short break and return after this. You're listening to the Cumberland City Council Candidates' Forum from Allegheny College of Maryland on 1270 AM WCBC and online at WCBCradio.com. Our next question is for candidate Nicole Wagner. It will come from panelist George McKinley.
Yes, candidate Wagner. I would, in responding to the next question, I'd like you to remember that not all city employees are residents of the City of Cumberland. In addition, I'd like you to address specifically the issue of the SAFER grant in that we know that public safety consumes all, or almost all, of the real estate tax base in this community. So if you're elected, would your priority as a city official be to the taxpayers or to the employees of these agencies or organizations?
As I've stated before, my responsibility as an elected official is to see the vision out of the people I represent, which would be the citizens in turn are the taxpayers. While I feel that the city employees are very important and that they carry out the vision of the city council, I still, you know, I'm responsible for the taxpayers. I am open to hearing the city employees' ideas, comments, but that's my responsibility. Thank you.
David Caparelli.
Ultimately, without the taxpayers, none of the other works that we look at are possible. Ultimately, we work for the taxpayers at their behest. Regarding the fire department and the grant, currently Chief Dunn has been working with the city. We were looking at ways to restructure billing for the fire department, other additional ways to cut costs, and we have to factor in that the city is saving through this grant approximately $200,000 in paid overtime per year. So I think between the restructuring and building and the cost-cutting, if we can make up that difference, I feel confident in keeping these employees on. I have recently rode with the ambulance service, and I know John probably has a lot more experience in that, but our guys are really running thin. The first two ambulances out of the station, they're nonstop. If you get a third call, it has to come out of South Cumberland, throw in a potential fire or something else on top of that, you're looking at a perfect storm. I think that we need to maintain a level of safety within the city. I believe that the citizens want that, but also, as I said, regarding the financial, the three aspects looking at and going forward from there. Thank you.
John Klein.
Coming from a background in public safety, having worked for the City of Cumberland for 37 and a half years in the fire department, I'm very familiar with their operations, and I'm very familiar with the SAFER grant. The SAFER grant allowed us to hire eight additional personnel to bring our staffing level up to where it was probably back in 1973, '74, when I first came on. But back in '73 and '74, we didn't run an ambulance service. Since then, we picked up that service in 1976, I believe it was, with the same number of personnel, and over the years, we have lost personnel in the fire department. SAFER grant allowed us to bring those personnel back. So with that in mind, the city has known now for three years that those funds will be their responsibility. Well, actually, after the second year, the City of Cumberland has to pick up the cost of those additional personnel. I think it's important, and if you talk to the citizens of Cumberland, public safety is number one. They want police, they want fire, they want to know when they have an emergency, somebody's going to respond. There are ways to restructure the fire department without losing personnel, and that would be to pick up some additional billing, whether it be through additional funding from the county, since we run out of the county, or to be able to do billing in areas that we haven't done before, such as automobile accidents, where the insurance companies will pick up a portion of our costs for that. With that said, again, citizens of Cumberland, expect the public service, they expect a fire truck to roll up when they have a fire, and they expect the ambulance service to be there when they need it. Thank you.
Nicole Wagner asks for some time.
Forgive me if I did not hear the question correctly. Could you repeat it? Because I thought the question was, what is my responsibility? The taxpayers or the employees? Is that correct?
Yes. Keeping in mind that they are not all city residents, and keeping in mind that the SAFER grant, when it expires, will be the burden of the city, and that we're already paying 100% of our taxes to maintain public safety. That's real estate taxes right now. I believe that's correct, and how, you know, how your priorities will be adjusted in accordance to those thoughts.
But according to those thoughts, my responsibility is the city taxpayers, and I have always maintained that that is my responsibility. I would like a clarification from my opponents who they support and what their first mindset is, according to how they have previously stated.
David Caparelli asks for the rebuttal.
I also wanted to mention regarding, aside from the financial aspect, you know, in light of our recent events, we've had some pretty significant fires over the past couple of years. It's really hard to put a price tag on a loss of life. I think restructuring, any cost-cutting in addition to that, but also maintaining an optimum level of safety for our citizens. Thank you.
John Klein asks for some time.
Yes, thank you. I did want to comment on Nicole's question as to whether or not we are working for the taxpayers. Yeah, my first responsibility will be to the taxpayers of Cumberland, number one, but also I want to remind you that as a member of city council, I'm also responsible for all citizens that come through our town, travel through, or are here to visit, and we have to provide those services to protect those citizens that are in our area. Thank you.
Our next question will be for David Caparelli. It will come from panelist Brian Gallens.
Mr. Caparelli, after a failed attempt to convert the former Memorial Hospital building into a retail venture, city's now moving forward with plans to demolish the facility with a price tag of about $3.5 million. Do you think the city council botched this handling of the property and building, and what would you propose be done with that property and facility?
I think at this time, looking back, I don't know that anyone would say that a good deal was made. This is a bad deal across the board. It's costing taxpayers approximately $250,000 a year to maintain this facility, in addition to having city workers work at the facility as well. Tack that on, and potential loss of tax revenue for this site. I am for the demolition of it. I think three things can happen after the demolition that we need to look at. You will revamp some of the expenses through the sale and/or development of this property. We'll automatically be saving $250,000 a year, taking that off the books, and establishing a tax base for the property. I think if we go back to the beginning and add up these factors, we would have exceeded the $3 million from the beginning to this time financially.
John Klein.
You know, hindsight's 20/20, and I think the Maryland City Council's intentions were good in doing what they did to bring the individual in to work trying to get tenants for the building. With that said, and with the economy slump that we're into right now, it appears that probably our only option would be to demolish that section of the building. That would be the old section of Memorial Hospital, and to allow some developer to come in and develop the rest of that land. Dave is correct. That was costing us $250,000 a year to maintain, plus the employees that would work there to maintain the building. The savings we would receive from that could go towards the loan that's going to take to demolish that building. Now, they're looking at, they passed two ordinances, in fact, one for $3.3 million and one for $3.6 million. The loan that they applied for, for the $3.6 million, the hospital demolition was not eligible for that part of the loan, so they put out another ordinance for $3.6 million to use to demolish the building, plus some other infrastructure that they want to do. What scares me, both ordinances did pass, and what happens if they were successful in receiving those loans, the city could possibly borrow up to somewhere around $7 million. And find no politicians, if there are $7 million out there to grab, they take that opportunity. Now, they did promise us in the city council meeting that they were only going to go for one, so hopefully they'll hold themselves to that. Thank you. But yes, we do need to demolish that section of the hospital.
Nicole Wagner.
Would you please repeat the question?
Sure. After a failed attempt to convert the former Memorial Hospital building into a retail venture, the city's now moving forward with plans to demolish the building with a price tag of around $3.5 million. Do you think the city council botched the handling of that building and property, and what would you propose be done with that building?
Well, I'd like to clarify two things from my understanding. I don't believe that it was ever intended as a retail venture. I believe it was a mixed scenario. They were looking at manufacturing, office space, there was somewhat retail in there as well, but I don't believe that. And I'm not familiar with it being $3.5 million to demo it. I believe that there were other things within that ordinance to demo it, so I'm not familiar with that. Having said, clarifying those two things, I believe that they should have marketed it to someone that would take full ownership. I believe that it was never marketed properly. I do believe it needs to be tore down. It needs an HVA system. It needs a roof. There's a lot of things that the building needs, and yes, it is costing us $250,000 a year. That property would be more to us torn down because it's in a sustainable neighborhood, so I believe that we'll get more from it being torn down than what we are right now. Thank you.
You're listening to the Cumberland City Council Candidates' Forum from Allegheny College of Maryland on 1270 AM WCBC and online at WCBCradio.com. We'll take a short break and be back on WCBC.
In today's economy, everyone is watching the bottom line. Our low tuition rates, combined with scholarships and numerous financial aid options, help make a college education affordable. We are Allegheny College of Maryland.
Welcome back. You're listening to the Cumberland City Council Candidates' Forum from Allegheny College of Maryland on 1270 AM WCBC and online at WCBCradio.com. This event is presented by the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce and WCBC Radio. Our next question will be for John Klein. It will come from panelist Dr. Barb Beebe.
Mr. Klein, the current Allegheny High School will eventually be turned over to the Allegheny County Commissioners. As a Cumberland City Council member, how would you like to see that building and property be used in the future?
Thank you, doctor. My understanding of the building is not nearly as bad a shape as it was a few years ago when they did some remodeling on that. If I remember correctly, over on West Side, there was an elementary school that was given back to the community, which I think went into private developer's hands, and they made apartments out of that. That would be one way that we could reuse that building, creating a living space with properties and so forth. Also, we could use a community center in the City of Cumberland, which would be a great opportunity without Allegheny High School. They have the space, they have the gymnasium, they have the property that would be valuable for that particular purpose. But certainly, turning it back over, trying to give it to a private developer for redeveloping, whether it be housing or whatever, would be a super idea. Thank you.
Nicole Wagner.
Please repeat the question. Thank you.
Sure. The current Allegheny High School will eventually be turned over to the Allegheny County Commissioners. As a Cumberland City Council member, how would you like to see that building and property used in the future?
From my understanding, there'll be a couple parties involved in the decision that's going to be made in the future of this disposal or whatever comes of the building. The Cumberland- The Cumberland City Council, the Board of Education, as well as the Commissioners. I think they have a verbal agreement that they're all going to come back to the table and talk about what's best for our community. Having said that, I find that, again, we're needing a residential neighborhood and such, and that's a sustainable area, a sustainable neighborhood, and I think that that would be something positive for our community.
David Caparelli.
I think what we ultimately want to have in place is anything that can prevent a repeat of Memorial Hospital. It's my understanding that the building is currently in disarray and deteriorating. However, this is in a great, sustainable neighborhood, and I think that it should be looked at. Housing established that best complements the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Our next question will be, okay, you have one minute?
I'm going to take us back to a question from previously that I wanted, I don't feel that I got a direct answer. The taxpayer or the city employee, what their responsibilities were. I've always stayed that I was for the taxpayer, and my opponents as well did, and I'd like to know why they have changed their position, if indeed they have, because I don't feel we were given a direct response on that. So this is directed to Mr. Klein as well as Mr. Caparelli.
David Caparelli.
Well, again, hindsight's 20/20. Sometimes you get a little nervous up here, and you have a question fired at you immediately, and sometimes you have time to dwell on it more. Ultimately, as I said in this position, you know, we work for the taxpayer. That's the bottom line. No F Ns or buts. I think that the question last forum was posed, who is more important, the city taxpayer or the city worker? And I answered that you can't differentiate or can't choose. The taxpayer fits the bill for the city, bar none. So, I mean, looking back on that, I do change my answer somewhat, but I'm hoping that I change it to it more accordingly and more proper. John?
John Klein.
I believe in the first forum that we held, I thought my answer was clear then. I think it's going to be clear now. I am for the taxpayer. The taxpayer is the one that basically foots the bills for the services that we provide in the city of Cumberland. I also said that we need to be fair to everyone. Our city workforce is probably one of the best workforces that we have. We can do that, and we can do both by working with the city workforce, negotiating our contracts. I think everybody knows that our economy is in the tank, and by working together with the city workforce, we can work together to provide the services and still meet the needs that they want, and still be able to be within the taxpayers' desires for the city of Cumberland also. But yes, I am for the taxpayer. That's an equivalent.
Our next question is for Nicole Waggoner. It will come from panelist Bill DeGaulle.
With the realization that the tax dollars in the city of Cumberland and Allegheny County are extremely limited in this day and age, with that realization, which city services, if any, would each of you consider consolidating with the county to cut costs? Secondly, would you ever consider voting the city out of existence and having it being absorbed into the county?
Would you repeat the question one more time, please?
Yes. It's very clear now that you all realize that the taxpayer does carry the burden of the dollars for the city and for the county. And with that realization, which city services, if any, would you consider consolidating with the county to cut costs? And with the redundancy of services, would you ever consider voting the city out of existence and having it be absorbed by the county?
I believe that municipal levels of government exist to handle certain levels of services. I've stated before that I believe that there are some services that we can consolidate, and that would be tax and utility. I think that could be done at one location, as well as zoning and planning. I don't think that the city versus the county, as far as the terrain goes, is completely different in the geographics of it, so I believe that those are possibly two areas that we could consolidate. I also think that through consolidation of those departments, I would like to see it being done through attrition as well. So, and no, I would not be for, if my first statement didn't answer that, I would not be for voting the city out of existence. Thank you.
David Caparelli.
I agree. One of the aspects that possibly could be combined is tax and utility. However, as we mentioned before, the possibility of some ambulance service being combined possibly with the county. If we could go back about three years recently, this past summer, we had our current financial report come out. The reporting advised is that we do not exceed 10% of our debt ratio. Now, three years ago, as some of you may remember, at the end of one of the fiscal years, the city actually had to borrow money to make payroll. At this time, and through three years, we've restructured our debt, which saves us approximately $2.5 million a year, and at this time, our current debt ratio is approximately 7%. So I think some of the necessary cuts have been being made through restructuring and refinancing our debt. It's enabling cash flow, and it's enabling us to build our cash reserve.
John Klein.
With the dwindling funds coming from the state, obviously, the city of Cumberland's had to make some adjustments. If we're talking about consolidating some services, there are some areas that we could consolidate in. One of them would be tax and utility, as Nicole mentioned, code enforcement, possibly planning and zoning into one office. But, and again, I think if we want to do that through attrition, if you could. The problem is when you consolidate those services into one, someone else is picking up the workload. So that individual or that section of county government or city government that's picking up the additional workload has to put that burden back on the city employees that are currently there. If we talk about disbanding the city charter, obviously, what you're looking at is probably going to a county form of government. City of Cumberland is one of seven incorporated cities in Allegheny County. Personally, I would not agree with that. The city of Cumberland currently owns the water rights. They own the dams. They control the water. We also control the resources around the dams, as far as that goes. If you recall, several months ago, there was some talk of Western Pennsylvania Conservatory giving the city $4 million to basically put that property in conservation. The city taxpayers came forward and said absolutely not, and so that was niched. I am not in favor of going to a county form of government in no way. I think the city of Cumberland will eventually come out of the rut that we're in, and that we're going to survive, and we're going to be a stronger city for it. Thank you.
Nicole Waggoner, you ask for 60 seconds.
Yes. I failed to mention that the FY13 budget has cut a half a million in positions, all through attrition except for one. We need to keep in mind that we need smaller government with the limited financial streams that we have going for us now. We need to reduce our expenses. We need to explore more grant funding, and there's other ways as well, like permitting as well. We need to extend the full cost and the burden that goes on the city with permitting on to the person who actually is applying for the permits instead of, you know, utilizing some of the taxpayers' money, in essence. The taxpayer, they're more concerned with the infrastructure and public safety and such, so I think those are ways that we could possibly increase revenue streams. Thank you.
Our next question, John Klein, you ask for 60 seconds?
Yes, thank you. One of the crazy things we did back in '08, I think, was on the rental units in the city of Cumberland. We allowed the landlord and the tenant to sit down and come to an inspection agreement on the property itself. We got away from the city inspecting the properties prior to the tenant taking over. I think the city is recently going back to that, but we could increase the revenue for the city by attaching a fee to those inspections, and I think what we would find at the same time, that we could eliminate a lot of the safety hazards that we're seeing, such as the fire code violations and so forth. Thank you.
Our next question is for David Caparelli. It will come from panelist George McKinley.
Yes, candidate Caparelli. Mr. Klein had mentioned something very interesting, bringing on this question, that the city does control the dam and the watershed area around the dam. A little over a year ago, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, there was a big controversy in the city about selling off or giving that property, or somehow transferring the ownership of the property in the watershed to a conservancy. Water is an international issue. Control of water in every region is important, and I'd like to know what your opinion and the other candidate's opinion is on making any attempt to get rid of that watershed area or control of the dam in any way.
I would obviously say no to that, George. As I think you had mentioned earlier, much of our budget is tied up with public safety, so a lot of our revenue is generated through our water. That's really the cash cow for the city, and I think to let that go, you know, it would be a huge problem. So I would obviously say no to that. Thank you.
John Klein.
I think you only need to go out west and talk to the individuals out there, just how important water is to their communities. It is the lifeblood of the community. I think, I do not believe that I would be in favor of any plan to give up the city's rights to their water, whether it would go through county form of government or disband our charter or whatever. Currently, we receive a pretty good size of revenue from our water resources, and that revenue has helped to sustain part of our general fund. In fact, one of the mistakes we've made over the last eight to 10 years was to spend down our reserves to dangerously low levels, and we'll possibly get into that here sometime, too. But no, I would never ever try to eliminate our water resources that we have. If you recall, the City Council meeting that we had that evening with the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy came in. The only thing we have done out there is we've given them, the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy, a right of way to property that they own along the mountain. Thank you.
Nicole Waggoner.
Water is gold. Our founding fathers of this city would turn over in their graves if we did something like that. There is no way, no how, that we can ever do that. It is a generating, it's a source of generating revenue for the city, and by any means, absolutely, it's not open for discussion. Thank you.
We're going to take a short break. You're listening to the Cumberland City Council Candidates Forum from Allegheny College of Maryland on 1270 AM W C B C and online at WCBCradio.com.
An Allegheny College of Maryland education helps open doors in the job market. 100% of employers of ACM alumni said that they are likely or highly likely to hire additional ACM grads. We are Allegheny College of Maryland.
Welcome back to the Cumberland City Council Candidates Forum from Allegheny College of Maryland, presented by Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce and W C B C Radio. Our next question is for candidate John Klein. It comes from panelist Brian Gallens.
Candidate Klein, Canal Place and Shops at Canal Place have failed to develop into the shopping and tourism attraction that many had hoped. Currently, there's debate over what to do with the aging but historic footer die works building. What is your vision for the future of Canal Place, and specifically, what would you like to see done with the footer structure?
That's a hot topic, and certainly, I'm going to be in the minority on my opinion on this one. Canal Place, as far as the businesses, they've struggled tremendously. There's no doubt about that. We've had businesses in and out of there. Location, location, location. I think the lady that had the toy store there, toy store, eventually moved up onto Bonner Street. Wise move on her part, because we don't have the people shopping in that area. Fairfield Inn has been an asset. It does bring people into the area. There's a restaurant there and a bar combination. Without getting into too much detail, and I know that this particular school occupies one part of the structure, and it does put people in there. The monastery school, 150 feet or less from a bar, doesn't make any sense to me. I walked by there the other day, and you've got these kids playing what looks like to be a cage. To me, that's ridiculous as far as education goes. Now, what do we do about the structure? Actually, I am for demolition, for demolishing the building, only because, and I'm not seeing the outside, but from the outside, if you look at the structure, there are some key points that indicate that there is some structural damage there, and that would be those stars on each side of the building. I think there's one or two in the back. Those stars are put there for a reason, and that's to hold the building together, hold the side walls in. If you eyeball the building from the side and look at it, you'll see that the building itself has a barge or a slight difference. It's not absolutely true. If you look at the windows, which most of them have been knocked out, by the way, so the only people or the only things occupying that are the pigeons. So the biological hazards that are there would probably be another issue you have to deal with. Lead-based paints, another issue. But if that building had been set in any place else in the city of Cumberland, the city of Cumberland would have torn it down as a blighted building, but because it's set in a historic district, there is an issue as to whether or not it can be torn down. Thank you.
Nicole Waggoner.
Great question. Hot topic. As most listeners probably know, I am the Director of Sales at the Fairfield Inn and Suites, so Canal Place is something near and dear to me. Given the history, I believe we put the cart before the horse. That's not something that's hidden. But at the same time, the canal is a vital part of our history, and the National Park Service recognizes that. And I know there's talks about possibly doing a boatyard. The rewatering of the canal, I don't foresee that ever happening, so we need to concentrate on what we can do. So having said that about what we weren't able to do and concentrating on what we have, the great Allegheny Passage, I said on the board, the Mount Maryland Trails Board of that Maryland section of the passage, relies heavily on that canal. In saying that, they pass through there. The bikers, they utilize the shops. We have a flourishing shop there, which is Trail Connections and such, so it is a piece of history, but I think we just need to work with what we have. In regards to the footer die works building, I'm under the impression that with the historical society, that historical trust, excuse me, we're not able to tear that down. It has to be either a natural disaster, or we have to rehabilitate it. And I'm pleased to say that DeeDee Ritchie, who is the new director there, is doing a wonderful job. She has connections downstate. This is what she did in Garrett County. She can apply for grants, so I'm looking forward to stabilizing that building, getting tenants in there. But then, once we do that, then what do we do then? How do we connect it to downtown Cumberland? Well, we need to do signage and such, and I am pleased to say that the Mount Maryland Trails has applied for funding to do signage from Canal Place down to Cumberland. Thank you.
David Caparelli.
At this time, expenses are being met at Canal Place. We need to continue to keep the shops full, but we also need to create activity and other events that complement and help our existing tenants who are struggling. I think we only have one that has been there since inception. Ultimately, Canal Place is part of downtown. However, the train and the trail are great, but we need to be doing more. As far as the footer building, I mean, we mentioned earlier, Memorial Hospital is another good example of buildings set for demolition. It's an unfunded mandate. It's owned by the state and by Canal Authority, and it's protected by Maryland Historical Trust. However, if demolition is not an option, we need to appeal to the state to secure the funds necessary to stabilize the structure for the purpose of development, investment, or privatization strategically. Thank you.
Nicole Waggoner asks for 60 seconds.
And again, I just want to reiterate, it's not an option to tear it down because of the Maryland Historic Trust. So, again, I just want to reiterate, that is not an option. The only way is coming down if it's a natural disaster, so I just think we need to continue to keep mindset of that and apply for the funding and such for that, and that's all I wanted to reiterate.
John Klein.
I've got to disagree with my opponent about it not being an option to tear down. Presently, the building is not on the Historical Trust. There's an application in the process right now to place that building as part of the Historical Trust. The building sets on a historical site. The building sets on a historical site at this point. The other thing, the city of Cumberland has seen fit to reduce the amount of funds that they're putting into it. The Fairfield Inn, there was an agreement when they built there that that 5% of the hotel motel tax, 3% would go to Canal Place. And that's the only part of that hotel motel tax that goes to Canal Place. The city is reducing that to 2% next year and 1% the following year, and eliminating the funds to Canal Place. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the county is also doing the same. We used to have a rail fest and a canal fest in that location. When I contacted the Canal Place Authority, I was told that that was no longer viable because of lack of funds. Thank you.
Our next question will be for Nicole Wagner. It will come from panelist Dr. Barbara Beebe.
Yes, Ms. Wagner. Do you believe the city should help foot the cost for the necessary infrastructure upgrades associated with expanding broadband opportunities in the city?
I'm not aware currently of any talks within the city to foot the cost of that. However, I do believe it is vital, and I'm speaking on behalf of our business, the Fairfield. Marriott actually mandated that we take our speed up, of course. And it's, we have to be up to 20 megabytes per second. Well, we're currently at like 2 to 4. It's costing us $6,000 to do that. So, myself and the general manager, John Sherman, reached out to our IT guy. And he said, "In other communities, this is not how it works. This normally doesn't happen. The private, the businesses aren't the ones that generally are putting out the cost for that. And if they are, it's not at a price tag of $6,000." One thing that I'd like to point out is possibly partnering with private sectors to be providers, maybe through a co-op or something like that. I don't foresee at this time how the city can foot the cost for that. But I do believe it is vital for us to move in that direction. I believe that the co-op would definitely be worth looking into. And I think the high-speed internet access is vital in any community this time, especially if we're moving towards a health corridor and such. So, thank you.
David Caparelli.
As I mentioned earlier, you know, we need to really be selling Cumberland. And this is a new aspect for us that we can really expand on. We want to come off as business-friendly. And there are other ways other than maybe absorbing some of this cost, which may include streamlining regulations, cutting additional red tape. You know, we want to work hand-in-hand with people that want to come here and invest in our city. The new broadband will also help us enable with our domestic sourcing, which is an initiative in our economic plan. So, I think anything that we can do, we should essentially try to assist the businesses coming into our area.
John Klein.
I agree with Dave. I said, "The broadband is an issue." Actually, the broadband is an economic development tool that can be used to attract businesses to our area. The city of Cumberland, I understand that they're struggling financially. And hopefully, we can get that resolved. But anything that we can do as far as infrastructure, whether it be a piece of land or a tower, whatever they would need, I think that would be, that would be a part of cooperating to get that accomplished. Yeah, I support whatever the city of Cumberland can do. But yes, it's an economic development tool, and I think it's very important for our community. Thank you.
Nicole Wagner, you asked for another 60 seconds.
I just want to reiterate that I don't believe that we can afford to take on the cost and expenses of that, but because of the maintenance and upkeep. When you buy into something like that, then you're also responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the system. So, thank you.
John Klein.
Thanks, Dick. I think, and I agree with what Nicole was saying, but I think we talk about maintenance and upkeep. If you get a private and a corporation or a group of individuals, that could all be part of their access to the broadband to help pay for that infrastructure and to keep the upkeep. Thank you.
Our next question goes to David Caparelli. It will come from panelist Bill DuVall.
With the absolute necessity to control personnel costs, including salaries, pensions, and insurance benefits, which make up the largest portion of the city budget, what are your ideas, other than attrition, your thoughts on making changes in this area of the budget?
Well, I believe, I think as Nicole had mentioned earlier, we're in a current direction of cost-cutting, possibly by not filling in spots for retirees and condensing, continuing to condense positions. That was an additional savings of half a million dollars a year for the city. Any additional savings received by the departments that can be run more efficiently and cost-effectively. I think what we could do is a possible study across the board of every department before any of those cuts would be necessary. Thank you.
John Klein.
Bill, would you repeat that question for me, please?
Sure. "The absolute necessity to control personnel costs, including salaries, pension, and insurance benefits, which make up the largest portion of the city budget. Aside from attrition and some of the other things that we've already mentioned here tonight, what are your thoughts on making changes in this area of the budget?"
Okay. Well, I know with the, and I'll speak with the fire department side, because I know with the SAFER grant, they have reduced their costs by $200,000, just in overtime expenses. We understand that there are bargaining units involved here. One would be the International Association of Firefighters. I think the police department has two groups that they're negotiating with. And you have ASME with the city of Cumberland. I know every time contracts come up, this always becomes a hot issue. But I think if cooler heads prevail and the parties can sit down and talk these issues out and recognize that the city of Cumberland is striving to get their own finances back in order, I think we can work together with our employees. And I think if, by doing so, we can come out with a better picture, and I think everybody would be happy. Thank you.
Nicole Wagner.
I had stated before that I would start off with a salary and benefits survey. That's definitely something that I would look into. I know it was stated without using attrition, but I truly believe that we need smaller government. So, that would be vital in cost-saving measures through attrition. Another thing is, I think that we'd have to generate revenue. And I had mentioned before different ways of doing that. But it would be through permitting. Currently, our fire marshal within the city, he doesn't charge when he goes out to do inspections. So, there's areas that I'm pleased to hear that departments are taking ownership within their department and looking for ways to generate revenue and billing for services. I mean, ambulance and such like that. I mean, in other communities that I've researched, they're billing the insurances and such. So, those are some ways that I feel that we can do it. Thank you.
John Klein, did you ask for 60 seconds?
Did Dave get a chance to answer the question yet? Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll take 60 seconds more if I could. Nicole mentioned about a salary and benefit survey to see how we compare possibly with other cities and municipalities. Is that correct, Nicole? Okay. I think we've done that in the past. And again, I'm going to use the fire department as an example because I'm very familiar with that. That could also be a dangerous proposition because if you look at the salaries that we're paying our firefighters and our EMTs and our paramedics compared to with departments downstate, even of similar size, you're looking at probably 25 to maybe $15,000 additional of what we're paying ours. So, I think our residents and our taxpayers in Cumberland are probably getting off pretty reasonable with what we're paying our firefighters. Thank you.
Nicole, you would like 60 seconds?
In the comparisons that I've done throughout the state and speaking to different fire departments, our men and women are taken, we take care of them. I would say, when I said about salary comparison and such, it wasn't only within the government, but also looking out to private sector as well. So, we're getting a full picture of what's going on in the grand scheme of things. Thank you.
Our next question is for John Klein. It comes from panelist George McKinley.
Yes, Mr. Klein. I've personally sat on this panel through maybe four city council election cycles. I've heard the response from people like yourselves every time that the citizens of Cumberland, implying despite the cost, do not want a reduction of any of their safety services. That's always referred to, Mr. Klein made reference to it. Almost every panelist makes a reference to what the citizens want. Cite for me in detail where you get that information. Where's that study? Who performed it? When was it performed? And where can we get a copy of that?
Good question, George. My study comes from talking to the people that I've talked to when I go around putting up signs and talking to individuals. That's my study. But if you look at, if you look at it from a perspective of what's really important, and I'll go with myself and my family and my kids, public safety is number one. If you look at our, if you look at our crime rate compared to other parts of the state, and the state says the crime rate's down, city of Cumberland crime rate is probably where it was last year, if not increased. But public safety is number one in the taxpayer's mind. And I can only say that from talking to other individuals, George. Thank you.
Nicole Wagner.
I've asked about the specific study, a study at City Hall. And I was told that there was indeed a study, but it wasn't exactly to the questions of the services, per se. So, I've never been able to get my hands on a copy of this study, per se. But in speaking, as I've been walking door-to-door, it is very important to the citizens that I have spoken with. But that is something that, once in office, possibly we can look into. I do believe for myself, it's important to me as a mother, and you know, the instances that I've faced myself, being able to pick up the phone and call and have a quick response time. Riding along with those men and women, the last three shifts that I worked with them, I was very impressed at the response times. And I had to keep thinking to myself, "What if that was my mom? What if that was my grandmother?" And I had a very great sense of pride seeing what they were doing and the care and such that came out of that. So, I guess I'm speaking to myself and the people I've, for myself and the people that I've spoken to.
David Caparelli.
As far as the study goes, I don't know if there's, in such a study, George. The people that I meet on the downtown mall, the people I speak to and run into occasionally at the market, I believe that this is an issue because of the high number of seniors in our area. You know, they have concern that we will have sufficient safety care for them. And that's understandable. I also wanted to add, in addition to what Mr. Klein had mentioned, no one can deny that the crime is an evolving issue and also needs to be addressed. So, you're looking at a dual front. But you know, that's why I believe, that's where I'm getting my information from, is speaking to constituents and voters.
John, you want 60 seconds?
Yes, thanks, Dick. I think, George, if you look at it from the mayor and city council and their Neighborhood Matters project that they did last year, and they're also doing again this year, as they went around, they talked to the citizens and the communities, it was the citizens and the communities that told the mayor and city council that they want those services number one. And I think that's written somewhere in one of the news articles. Thank you.
We're going to take a short break. When we come back, we'll have one more question and also the closing statements. You're listening to the Cumberland City Council Candidates Forum from Allegheny College of Maryland on 1270 AM WCBC and online at wcbradio.com.
Allegheny College of Maryland's Cumberland campus is a beautiful place to learn and live. Friendly faces provide a personal touch and a welcoming atmosphere. We are Allegheny College of Maryland.
Welcome back to Allegheny College of Maryland. You're listening to the Cumberland City Council Candidates Forum on 1270 AM WCBC and online at wcbradio.com. This event presented by the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce and WCBC Radio. As we said before the break, we have one final question, and then we'll have closing statements. Our first question will go to Nicole Wagner. It comes from Brian Gowan's. The format a bit different on this particular question. Brian?
Nicole, the panelists have been asking the candidates tonight a long list of questions. As we close the forum tonight, what one question would you like to ask of your two opponents? And your opponents will have one minute each to answer that question.
Well, this is a different change on things, huh? Over the past year, what organizations, events, things that you've been tied to over the past year, what have you done that's benefited the city this year and moving forward in future years?
David Caparelli.
Could you elaborate and/or repeat, please?
Nicole Wagner.
What organizations or committees, just things that you've been a part of in the community in the last year, if you want to go back past a year, but I would prefer a year, within the year's time, nine months, what have you done to benefit Cumberland now, immediately, or for the future of Cumberland? This is just personally.
David Caparelli.
I'm guessing that you mean volunteer, et cetera, public service. I'm a proud member and often serve with the Alhambra when time permits. I'm involved with Toys for Happiness locally. We do something annually for their organization. I've been recently asked to be a new board member of the new local branch of CASA, which is coming up here, which aids and helps abused and neglected children. So, those are three things that I'm involved in, that I'm proud of, and I hope to continue doing into the future.
John Klein.
Thank you. Nicole, that's a tough question. But I don't think you can judge me, or actually judge anybody, on the number of organizations that you belong to or the groups that you belong to. Granted, there is an advantage to belonging to those groups and organizations. You have ties and you have friends and so forth, and they can help you out. But my sole purpose in running this campaign was to do the best job that I can possibly do for the citizens of Cumberland and devote my full time to the governing of the city of Cumberland. And to be able to do that, I need to free myself of some of the things that I've done. Okay? My only, the only two things that I belong, that I'm really concerned about is my church and my family at this point. Thank you.
Okay, are we doing a rebuttal with these questions? That would be the format. As a formatics issue, I'm going to go to video replay in the booth for this one. Brian Gowan's, our official. Okay, Nicole Wagner, 60 seconds.
My question is not to judge anybody from what they've done. My question is to understand you better and for you to articulate to our citizens what you've done for the community and what you have done in the past year or 10 years that's laid the foundation moving forward for our community. I have been involved with several organizations. That's no mistake. I have been. But my name is not just on a board. I put the hard work that's associated to those organizations. I, you know, with the trails, I'm pleased to say that we are affecting the small business community in this area. We have had a great economic impact. When it goes to the County United Way, I'm very pleased to say that we are affecting change in families and homes, and we're helping to take care of one another.
David Caparelli, it's your chance to ask the question.
Oh, okay. Could I respond to that?
Did you, would you like to respond?
If I may. I neglected. I also wanted to add, I mean, if that's what we're looking for. I'm a member of the Lady of Our Mountains Parish here in Cumberland. And I might not be allowed to read my closing statements if I don't say that I, we're also a new member of the Chamber of Commerce. So, thank you for that as well. John?
John Klein.
Okay, just to go back into what Nicole's comments, what I've done in the community. Actually, I've devoted 37 and a half years to this community in the fire service. I've come up through the ranks from firefighter to equipment operator, which is the driver, to lieutenant captain, deputy chief, and retired as a, as a... See, I lost my last rank. So, anyway, but I've dedicated my life to this community. So anyway, but I've dedicated my life to this community. I've done what I can possibly do in my service of the community and working with the mayor and city council to make this, this city a better community to live in. Thank you.
Okay, David Caparelli, your chance to ask the question.
If I may, I wanted to ask regarding, sound like George there, infrastructure spending. Do you believe that we spend too much, too little, or were adequate measures? And if, how would you change it if not?
John Klein.
Thanks, Dave. Actually, infrastructure spending has been lax for the last 15 to 20 years. There's no doubt about that. You can just, just look at the city as a whole, the deteriorating streets, roads, and so forth that we have. Our spending has improved. The city has, has, has taken the turnaround and starting to pave the streets. I would like to continue in that process, incorporating whatever funds that we can get from the state to do that, bring that back into the city's infrastructure.
Nicole Wagoner.
I think that we've done the best that we could have done with what we've had, but I think that we can do better. We need to do better. With the, well, let's face it, when Obama did the surplus of money, we got a big price tag that came from the federal government, and we utilized the funding for that. That's dried up. We just have to look at, like I said, utilizing state and federal low-interest bonds to be able to, to maintain what we have, but also repair. And it's no mistake, the city was bought, was built from the east to the west, so we're not the only city that's in detriment in some areas. There's a lot of cities that are struggling just like we are, but I think that we are moving forward in a positive direction, and we're making the changes, you know, with the pavement management plan and the other things.
Okay. John Klein. Oh, you already answered? Okay. Did everyone, everyone had a chance to answer that particular question? So it's John's turn to answer, to ask the question then. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, John, go ahead.
The City of Cumberland's population is directly correlated with the, the businesses that we have here and the, the industry that we have here. From 1970 to present-day census, we've lost approximately 8,865 residents, according to the census. How would either of my candidates, or what would either of my candidates do? Because that's a huge impact on our economy when we have that many people leaving our area. Now, the county has fared no better. They're somewhere in the same area of about eight to 9,000 residents that they've lost. If you look at our, our census, beginning back in the early 1920s when we started getting the infrastructure, the Kelly, Amica, PPG, they all came in here within that 30 or 40-year span, and from 1950 on, we've lost all that business. And with those loss of jobs, we've lost residents. What do my candidate, what do my opponents feel, or how do they feel they can get our population back up? Thanks. And that also increases our tax base.
Nicole Wagoner.
Well, I mean, we do have an aging population. That's no secret. I, I think that we need to look at ways of attracting more people to move to our community. And I think that we're moving in that direction with the economic development, so I think we need to stay the course with that, and I believe that's how we go about it. Thank you.
David Caparelli.
I, I had actually seen a population study, and it sort of struck me. Our population, I believe, peaked approximately 1945 and had been a gradual decline since then. Unfortunately, over time, the old economy has changed and it's gone. It's not just gone from Cumberland, but it's probably gone for many places in our country. I think to reinvent our town to an extent and revitalize the areas that can be revitalized, and to aggressively implement our economic initiatives listed in our economic strategic plan, I think through that and try to build population base and attract people to Cumberland through, as, as I said before, domestic sourcing, other ways of attracting business through our, our new broadband line. Use a variety. Activity, without activity, there's, there's no results. So I think constant activity, constant contact with people who have an interest in Cumberland and, and going forward from there.
David, you may as well keep the, keep the microphone. We're getting ready now for our final, final statements from all three candidates. You will have two minutes to make your final statement, and we'll start with David Caparelli. David?
Thank you. I would like to thank WCBC, Allegheny College, and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, and also thank those in attendance and everyone listening at home. It is true that we face numerous tasks in our town, as much of our nation does at this time. Our town has a rich history, and I believe in the promise of its great future. I am a citizen and a taxpayer, just like you. I know how wonderful it is to grow up in Cumberland, and I want to preserve that quality of life for my children and for your children. I believe fighting for the future of our town. The task we face may be daunting, but many times the things worth fighting for don't come easy. I believe it's time Cumberland stopped asking why and started asking why not. It is time, I want all of our citizens to know that no one will work harder or fight, fight harder for you than I will. And as you go to the polls in the upcoming weeks, I want you to know that I am here to serve you, and I, I would be honored by your vote. I would also like to thank my many supporters, because without you, I could not be here tonight. And I'd like to thank John and Nicole. It has been a pleasure getting to know each of you and wish both of you well in the future. I'd like to thank everybody tonight, and good night, Cumberland.
John Klein, final statement from you.
Okay, thank you. I too would like to thank WCBC and the Chamber for putting on this forum. It gives our, our citizens an opportunity to meet us up front and personal and to listen to our comments. They, they understand where we're coming from and it helps us to project ourselves to them. I would just like to let the citizens know that, you know, I'm a conservative, probably sometimes to a fault. Never owned a new car until 2010, and the only time I bought that is because I knew I was going to retire and I needed something with a long-term warranty. So I will look out for the city's budget, and I will do all I can to work for the citizens of Cumberland. I grew up in this community. I was born and raised in Cumberland. I've raised my family here. I, I've been one of the fortunate ones to have a job my entire life. From age 15, 15 and a half, I think, I went to work at Dusick's Produce on McCanney Street. Worked with Mike and Martha, who taught me some good work ethics. Went to high school here, had a, a lot of great teachers in Mr. Dennison and Mr. Williams. Mr. Dennison was my sixth grade teacher, who was a mentor to me. I was raised by an aunt and uncle, who were great people, who taught me the values and to be honest and so forth. I love this community. I am, I am passionate about Cumberland. I want to see Cumberland grow. I want to continue the work that our mayor, our present mayor and city council have done to increase the, the infrastructure and to do what they're doing. I just want to see this city to continue on and to be the best city it possibly can. Thank you very much.
Final statements from Nicole Wagoner.
Again, I'll echo the thank you to the Chamber and WCBC for hosting this forum, because truly, your campaign is your resume to your constituents, and I think this is a great venue to be able to inform our community. I'd, I'd like to just mention and thank that I'm very proud to have the endorsements of Councilman Mary Beth Perlazi, Councilman Nick Scarpelli, Councilman Butch Hendershot, the Cumberland Police, and the Cumberland Fire Department, and there's many others as well, and the Cumberland City employees as well. So I'm very proud to have those endorsements, and it's a testament that they have faith and believe in me as well. I'd like to thank my supporters. Obviously, none of us would be here without them. Where I come from is Cumberland, to me, growing up, this is the area in which I can remember Saturdays, went down to GB's, got my Sunday dress for church. Grandma then took me out to, to McDonald's. It was the GB sale in the parking lot. I don't know if anybody remembers that, but there was great memories, and that is what I want to bring back to Cumberland for not only my children, but for your children as well as our families. I believe that we have promise here. I see it. I see us moving in a positive direction. I just don't think we do a great job of highlighting all the positive things that we have in this community, and that's something that I can bring to the table with my marketing experience and such. So I want to thank you for listening, and I would greatly appreciate your vote as the only woman on the ballot.
Nicole Wagoner, John Klein, David Caparelli, thank you each. Thank you for the Cumberland City Council Candidates, the staff, and volunteers of the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce and WCBC Radio, 1270 AM, and the sponsors. And most of all, thank you for listening to this forum, for the candidates for the 6th Congressional District with Roscoe Bartlett, and for Cumberland City Council. Please take advantage of the early voting opportunity, or go to the polls November 6th and let your voice be heard. Once again, thank you and good night from Allegheny College of Maryland.